Good evening, everyone. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school's business. And it's not to be considered a public meeting today. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. And upon request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting. Okay, please follow. Mr. Aubrey?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Present.
Mr. Grizzly? Here.
Here.
Mr. Higgins? Here. Here. Mara? Here. Ben and Tom? What? We have meeting minutes that were included in our, in our cabinet for two different meetings. I'll move with the Board of Education approving the attached meeting minutes from February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and March eleventh, twenty twenty five. You have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, and we have an agenda that was. I'll move with the Board of Education approving the agenda as presented. You have a motion and a second and a discussion. Um, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to our school presentations.
Uh, we have Dr. Ryan Rowan here from Washington ISD, our career tech head across the county. He created a plan to reason, it's really interesting, and we're seeing the presentation, he had pretty copies. Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes with you this evening to update you on our current technical education and the works that we're doing countywide and at Dexter to expand access to these type of opportunities for students. First, when we talk about a world-class education, I know we talk about a lot of different avenues that students can take. Certainly, I'm here tonight to talk about career technical education, but we can also talk about advanced placement, international backglow, dual enrollment, first robotics, which is pretty timely tonight, saw the students that were practicing first robotics, and then particularly the way curriculum and more. When we look at these opportunities, we look at these opportunities from a K-12 perspective. Often we think about career technical education as a 11th through 12th grade opportunity for our students. We kind of have to, we have to shift mindsets there to talk about, we want to talk about drones or aviation or robotics and engineering, entrepreneurship, business marketing, a lot of those aspects can take place much earlier in a child's life than waiting until they're 11th or 12th grade. We'll talk about that this evening. Um, we have to engage the community. So over the last few years, uh, we have engaged our business industry partners, um, University of Michigan Health, Toyota, and Solar, and Bear, and others, um, our post-secondary institutions, so WCC, EMU, University of Michigan. Uh, certainly our legislators to increase funding for, for technical education, and then certainly our K-12 entities as well. If we do anything about County, it needs to be research-driven, data-driven. We'll talk about how we've come to the conclusion that we have tonight on expanded access, launching new programs. We'll talk about that, um, in our programs that currently exist in the county and we're looking to expand those programs. And then whatever we do, we'd like it to be world-class here in Washington County. Um, the system as it is or was, um, we have a decentralized system. So majority of our seventy-plus CTE programs are housed within traditional high schools. You may know of locations throughout the state of Michigan that have a career technical education center. Often those counties that have a center often will have vocational village. We don't have a center, we don't have a village. We'll talk about how our structure is unique than, uh, more than most. Sure you've heard about this, but throughout the state, throughout the country, we have a very tough transportation system. Busting is an issue and continues to be, so we have an inefficient, complicated transportation system. Um, often when you have a CTE center or a vocational village throughout the state of Michigan, it will come with teachers that happen to work for the ISD. In this county, Washington County, because a majority of our programs are housed within a traditional high school, it's that district's employees that teach our career technical education programs. Um, enrollment is below demand, so we cannot keep up with the level of demand that we have for our CTE programs today. We'll talk about those enrollment trends both in Washington County as a whole and at Dexter. We lack a countywide system of career awareness and exploration. Again, I don't think any of us would argue that we need to start having students, um, their self-actualization, uh, exploring those career interests, not choosing a career, but understanding that they may like to be around engineers. They may like to build or work with their hands or work with computers. Um, and a majority of our programming currently is funded through general funds, so I'll talk about a little bit of finance and how we fund our CTE programs. We're in Washington County, economic hub of the state, so we are in a community that has energy and excitement around applied experiential learning. That could be first robotics or CTE, AP or IB. As we build this system, as we explore how to expand access, we are working, as I said, with our K-12 institutions, our business leaders, our post-secondary institutions, and community organizations like Michigan Works Southeast, um, United Way, and others, uh, including nonprofits. State Superintendent Dr. Michael Rice in the State Board of Education has recognized that, um, not only does CTE need increased funding, it costs more to educate students through career technical education opportunities, but also there are CTE deserts that are located throughout the state. You would not think about Washington County as any sort of desert, but we are for a couple of reasons. One, we have a, a system in which where you reside is where you can attend CTE programs. I'll show you a map of this, and we cannot keep up with the demand. So for instance, I'll give you one example. The Southwest Washington Consortium that Dexter is part of has the Health Science Program. And before I went to the ISD, I was the director of the Southwest Washington Consortium. We had eighty students apply for the Health Science Program. Most of those students are going on to nursing careers. We're in desperate need of healthcare workers, including nurses. Well, we had eighty applicants for forty spots, so there's forty individuals that would not have an opportunity to affirm what they want to do before they graduate, uh, perhaps what they don't want to do before they graduate. And so I reacted quickly and we responded and we launched Exercise Science and Sports Medicine Program. So a lot of those students didn't like the sight of blood, they didn't want to sweat a urine, they wanted to be athletic trainers and physical therapists. So that offset the demand for that program for a time. So now Exercise Science and Sports Medicine is full, and we're back to eighty-seven applicants for forty positions in Health Science. So what could we do to mitigate that? We have to expand access so that students can enter some of these CTE programs that they'd like. As I said earlier, Chris and I were both superintendents in Illinois County, uh, districts right next to each other. They have two point nine mils, Chris, if you want to point that out, uh, right there. Just a little historical value that for those that have over one mil in a vocational village, those were passed prior to nineteen ninety-four. You can pass it for as much as you wanted, for as long as you wanted. So that in Illinois County was for ninety-nine years, and it is for two point nine mils. That generates about fourteen million dollars a year. Forty-one percent of the ISDs have a vocational village. We have not in Washington County. They rely on federal Perkins grant funding that all, uh, locations in Michigan, um, have, as well as added cost state funding. So, um, those are the areas that are, are without support for their K-12 career-related, career-focused education. Um, just to put that in perspective, so two point nine mils in Illinois County generates fourteen million dollars. In Washington County, one mil would generate twenty million dollars simply because of a larger tax base. Um, so how do you, how do we fund our, our CTE programs? Well, we have about five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in federal Perkins funding. We received about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state added cost funding, so about one point four million dollars we receive. The rest is through general funds, so you can see what the districts are contributing at this point in time, uh, about ten point three five million dollars coming by. There are fifteen ISDs with no vocational village. You can see Washington County, uh, the, one of the more progressive economic hubs of, of Michigan, Livingston, Wayne, McComb, probably the others, a lot of rural districts on that, uh, list. Uh, a lot of people ask me, what could those, what could those funds be used for? Uh, certainly they could offset the cost of your vocational certified teachers. Um, it also paid for transportation costs, so your bus that goes to and from your Southwest Washington Consortium, uh, programs, curriculum and assessment cost, maintenance, repair, equipment, career readiness activities certainly would free up general fund dollars, um, and also structural cost with, um, high-demand occupations like health science, so, uh, offset the cost of an additional program. Uh, not all funding is equal, so like I said, between the state, uh, school aid with added cost funding and Perkins, we receive about six hundred and seventy-nine dollars per CTE student. It costs on average about twenty-four hundred dollars, uh, per student for each CTE program. When you have a cybersecurity student, and I know there's Dexter students that go to Chelsea for cybersecurity, and they fulfill that year, every CTE program requires at least one state-approved credential, license, or certification. And if you're in cybersecurity or IT, many of those assessments at the end of the year cost two to three hundred dollars a piece to take. They're worth that walking away as that student goes off to college, uh, but it doesn't leave a lot of money for the, the remainder of the cost to run that book. So if we were to have a rated funding model, by rated I mean legislative funds, working with our post-secondary partners, WCC, EMU, and U of M, and they're all at the table. If we were to, uh, leverage some business partnerships like Toyota and LeBeere and Zoller, U of M Health, and potentially look at a vocational village, we could decrease the CTE deserts, increase student graduation, um, from high school with a purpose, increase students exploring career paths that interest them, increase students earning that recognized credential. So that could be an automotive certificate, it could be a cosentraity license, it could be cybersecurity or a CNA as a student goes on to a nursing career. And increase student engagement at a much earlier age. So what have we done so far? Well, we've increased program quality and quantity, the number of programs that exist, uh, to try to offset the demand that's, that's currently at our, at our doorstep, and then certainly we could allocate resources differently than we currently are. If you look at the left-hand side, all of the circled programs that are proposed have been initiated. So we've gone from about fifty-three, fifty-five programs to well over seventy, uh, basically trying to respond to the demand for our career technical education programs. So what has that done? Well, by expanding programs, even though the Washington County ninth through twelfth grade population overall has decreased over the last four years, you can see that the CTE enrollment has gone from eighteen hundred and sixty-six to well over thirty-one hundred in a matter of four years. Um, in Dexter, uh, that same year, twenty-one, twenty-two, there were sixty-four students enrolled in CTE programming, uh, went to eighty-six, and now for the last two years has been a hundred and seventeen students. Um, so I just told you we're at limited funds and we're expanding programming, so how have we done that with limited funds? So the legislators, uh, came to the table and said, for those of you that do not have a village fund, um, vocational village, we will grant you, uh, CTE equipment grant funds to, one, improve the quality of your programs with equipment, and to expand access to your students. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we received just over a half million dollars, and we basically went into programs, evaluated them, and said, what equipment needs to be replaced? So if you had a mannequin or a simulator in Health Science Program that was outdated, we came in and we replaced those. Next year with five hundred and seventy-six thousand, we started to expand programs. Last year, we received one point one five three million dollars, expanded more programs. This year, zero. So we've reached a tipping point. The premise of that grant fund was to say to the community, if we can do this with that amount of money, imagine what we could do with a more robust funding model. Um, and that, so that's where we're at today. So the superintendents, um, the nine superintendents at the local districts and the ISD superintendent, superintendent Norman came together. Uh, we applied for a consolidation and infrastructure fund to study the consolidation of CTE services in Washington County. When we think about consolidation, six of the nine districts operate in the Southwest Washington Consortium. Whitmore Lake is on their own. Ann Arbor is on their own, and Ypsilanti is on their own. So if you're in Ypsilanti and you have access to six or seven CTE programs, if you're in Ann Arbor, you're at access to the Ann Arbor programs and Whitmore Lake. There's not one of those programs that all from students from all nine districts can access, not any one of the seventy programs. Where you reside is where you can attend. So if you are a student at Dexter, you want to go to a closure repair program, we have one of those in the county. It's not a consortium. If you're an Ann Arbor student and you want to access the only welding program in the county, it's in Saline, so the consortium. So LeBeere is at the table saying, we don't care where the weldings come from, or welding engineers come from. We want to expand access, and we will help you do that, and there's things we can help you with, equipment, curriculum, and other things. We can't help with the vocational certified teachers, uh, so we need you to come to the table with that. So we received a quarter million dollars. We worked with the U of M Youth Policy Lab, and they did a study on the access to CTE programs. Paid for my, uh, role at the ISD, so that was not at any expense to the local districts. And then based on the findings and recommendations out of that U of M Youth Policy Lab report, we applied for five million dollars to institute and implement the findings and recommendations regarding that report. Like I said, at the same time, the Board of Education recognizes that there's more need. I took four students up from Washington, we presented to the State Board of Education. Months later, uh, they are recognizing the need to expand resources for our CTE programs. It also aligns with Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Plan. Uh, this is recognized, and frankly, the state is watching what we do in Washington County to address the inequities to access, uh, CTE programs to expand that access, um, to address some of the five that they've, they've put forth. So this wasn't just the last year, it wasn't just the last two years. We've worked with the U of M Youth Policy Lab to really study CTE since two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we studied, um, basically accessing CTE in two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, the state commissioned the U of M Youth Policy Lab right here in Ann Arbor, uh, to study the career access throughout the state of Michigan. This was pre-COVID. Half million dollar, or a half million skilled trades careers would be available through two thousand and twenty-six. Frankly, COVID accentuated an already existing problem. We had sixty-five to seventy-year-olds that were retiring pre-COVID. Now we have fifty to fifty-five-year-olds, and as you know, everything from education to manufacturing to healthcare to engineering, there is a talent crisis, and so that's being recognized. Um, as you work your way through, you can see that we went back to it in two thousand and twenty-one to access, um, find out if there was equal access across all districts for demand. There is. Twenty twenty-two, the state went back to U of M Youth Policy Lab report, and then last, our last report, those paid out of the, out of the grant, really recognized, and you could see the last bullet. There are many opportunities in front of us that can increase access for students, including exploring other funding models, and that's what we've done over the past year. What, who can we bring to the table to have that conversation? Um, return on investment, so you can see that for every dollar that's put in, five dollars returned to the state economy. Obviously, our business partners in Washington County are, are willing to come to the table and have that conversation. The one-two-seven rule, so for any organization, um, in general, there's a one-two-seven rule of every ten employees, one requires a master's degree or more, two require a bachelor's degree, and seven require an associate's degree certificate or credential. Seventy-seven percent of our students that come out of our CTE programs go on to a four-year university. So we need physicians, we need doctors, but at the U of M Health Center, they will tell me, in addition to doctors and physicians, we need stenographers, we need sterile processors, we need x-ray techs, we need PSNs, we need RNs, um, we need CNAs, and we can't afford to have one student approach the stage of graduation from high school saying, I'm really good at math, but I don't know what I want to do with it. So we're working toward that end. Um, so what are we doing with the five million dollars? Well, first, we're increasing capacity. When I arrived at the ISD a year and a half ago, I arrived as the only individual ISD employee solely focused on career technical education. So we're building capacity, we're hiring a CTE, we've hired a CTE coordinator, a work-based learning coordinator to work with the businesses, uh, the schools, the families, and the students to connect their learning to, uh, business industries, and internships, job shadows, field trips, a special populations coordinator, a data reporting specialist, and a CTE grant management coordinator. That was all being done at least four different ways with the four different consortions, it's the NR, Whitmore Lake, in the Southwest Washington Consortium. So bringing that house just was fiscally responsible. Countywide pathways, so I'd like to spend a minute on this. Um, we are launching a drone aviation program. It aligns with a lot of the middle school drone programs that are exploratory. This would be a year-long CTE program that students would earn their FAA drone pilot's license. Um, they could go with that and become an entrepreneur, they could go into, uh, Michigan Tech and be a surveyor, they're using drones, it could be public safety, uh, it could be video. But it basically captures the attention of students on their way to becoming engineers or coders or whatever they'd like to become. Uh, engineering construction trade, so as you know, here, uh, we've explored and have the opportunity for construction trades at Dexter. Two school districts in Washington County do not have access to construction trades programs, Whitmore Lake and Ypsilanti. What if we had a west side hub at Dexter, state-approved CTE program, and brought Whitmore Lake into that consortium? What if we had an east side location at Mylan, they have a state-certified teacher, vocational certified teacher, that could serve the east side of the county, and then Ann Arbor is theirs, and we have a three-legged stool to serve the construction needs of all students. Washington Community College has a construction management program, and they're relaunching their construction technology program because of our efforts here in Washington County. And last, we have a business entrepreneurship, sports, and tourism leadership program. Any student, any of our three thousand students that come out of our CTE programs as an eleventh grader, that has an entrepreneurial spirit, has the opportunity to take entrepreneurship one-on-one in the fall, one day a week at Washington, one-on-two in the spring, and one-on-three the summer after their senior year, along with a work-based learning opportunity. So they can come out of culinary or advanced manufacturing or building trades or nursing at no cost to them or their family, and walk away with a management certificate on the way to college. As a value-added piece, so we're launching that this fall. Why did we choose those three? The best leadership program is really a capstone experience after CTE. Engineering construction trades, we believe, could be a regional hub throughout Washington County, and the aviation aerospace program really is to capture the excitement of students who could go on to a variety of different careers based in engineering. And then we've done a lot of research, so you may have been part of this, but Hanover did the research, surveyed over four thousand individuals in Washington County. We conducted focus groups with business industry, parents, students. Forthright advising is doing a report to the community based on that data, and then we're doing countywide marketing and branding programs, uh, that we've never done before, to really let parents know what this has to offer to them and their family. This design process really started with, um, a think tank last May. It led to the superintendent's retreat with Business Industry Partners in August of two thousand and twenty-four. And now we are now at the community commitment and investment phase. I'm talking to all the Board of Education tomorrow. We have a CTE summit at Washington Community College, and then, um, after that, we'll have a report to the community, potentially do some polling to find out where the community is at, and then based on that, come back to the superintendents without research to find out how we would proceed potentially with, uh, standard access of the system in a financial model that we could recommend to the community for November twenty twenty five. Yeah, can you entertain any questions that you may have regarding the presentation, um, Dexter or the countywide work?
So you mentioned the private sector, uh, how much is actually funding in this, because they're short, always kind of being shortage in there, short nursing, et cetera. If you're a funding program from a private sector that would give, uh, kids a pipeline, a big program, scholarship-wise, funding into a job that they fund and they go and work for, you know, that helps a nurse or, I, every Ford, I don't know, same thing with the American program, right? Or even says they're short, nobody wants to fund the project.
So I'll give you an example with Zoller Manufacturing in Ann Arbor. So Zoller has, uh, their own internship program. It's not registered to the state or, or the feds, really is their own, so a student could come there either as part of their engineering CAD program, architecture CAD program their senior year as a paid intern, the summer after their senior year, and then depending if they go off to, a lot of students are Michigan Tech, U of M, or Michigan State, can come back for summer paid internships, or if they go to Washington, they could serve as an employee at that time as well. Uh, Toyota is another one that's at the table that really is dedicated, uh, funds through the FAME program, Federation of Advanced Manufacturing Education. So that is a earn-and-learn program. Student graduates from high school, they take classes Tuesday, Thursday at Washington. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they're making twenty to twenty-two bucks an hour, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, working for a variety of different companies, um, across the region, not just in Washington County. At the end of two years, they've earned an advanced manufacturing technology associate's degree, um, and really have paid for that out of the one month that they've had over that two-year span. U of M Health is now at the table, and we're looking at ways that we can have students that, one, are working as part of their senior schedule, if they go to WCC, or if they are a CNA and they go off to U of M for nursing, how could they too be at the table through scholarships, the latest conversation?
What's the percentage? You're looking at a relative percentage of. I mean, it's, it's a hard question, but.
Yeah.
You're asking for money. I mean, not again, but you're asking for money, it's obvious.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I could spitball a percentage, but I will go back and get that for you, and some, Chris, you can send it your way.
Security.
Yeah.
And it's like, why is it just part of the other WIIS budget? Why don't we make it part of that budget, which is a separate goal?
Uh, the ISD budget clearly is mostly grants and special aid. They have a very small general service budget, also the things that they do with managers. This year. So they don't have the funding to do any direct work. This would be, if they did go for a village, it would be the WIIS.
This would be, okay, so it would be. It would be a separate line.
Yeah, it'd be a whole separate.
Yeah, so vocational education would be a whole separate fund from general fund or special.
Yes.
And so is that the goal then, uh, countywide?
Well, that, I, I think that's what we're studying at this point. So tomorrow's the summit. We're bringing those, uh, private-public sectors together, to have that conversation. Um, they have not seen this presentation outside the board, we're really in front of the Board of Education at this point. Tomorrow will be the public. And then after that, really the press will be out on reports of the community, and then if we were to move forward with any type of vocational village, it would have to be after polling takes place, to find out where the community feels we can land.
And so, uh, the one that you referenced, like the two point nine mils down.
Yeah, I will do, in, in one way, it's really high in the pre. But a lot of, the K-12 just passed one if you, because it kind of wasn't.
Yeah, 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 you can only go up to one mil anymore. After nineteen ninety-four, you can't go higher than one. Yeah, you, you cannot do that, so that's why when I gave that example with one mil, that's all you can do now, and you have to go back to the voters for renewal, as I believe you should, if anything were to pass. So, yeah, you're either, prior to nineteen ninety-four, it was for as much as you want, for as long, or you are with us now, which is you could only go up to one, and if it passes, you have to go back to the voters for renewal.
How long?
I think it's, it's, uh, seven or eight years. Yeah.
See.
Is the most.
And then. Would the ultimate goal be to sort of have like a center, like you're saying, like a technical center where all of the, you know, for all of the classes?
I think you could have a blended approach here in Washington, and I'll tell you why. Um, currently, there are three state-of-the-art, world-class automotive programs, One Man Arbor, One NFT, One in Saline for the Southwest Washington Consortium. So the only students that do not have an access to that program is Whitmore Lake. So if we could pull Whitmore Lake, that'd be long-hanging fruit. If you look to something like aviation, I look at that as potentially having a neutral site location like at Ann Arbor Airport, where all students could come together. Um, there's others, like the building trades program example that I used, could be regional, so students wouldn't have to be on a bus as long, and it could be housed within our local district. So I, I don't know if it's necessarily a center, I think it's a blended approach based on what exists and what we can expand.
Did you have a total, um, a total budget that the. I mean, that's what the total cost would be working with.
So basically, where we're at right now with our seven ECT programs, the expenses to the nine districts and the ISD is approximately ten point three five million dollars a year. And so that would be, again, approximation of a half mil, would maintain what we currently have. Anything above that would expand.
But that's a, that's at where you were explaining that it's less than the, the demand for students.
Correct.
So if you were, is that fifty percent? I mean, you were just saying that.
Yeah, so that's, that's fifty.
More like twenty million or twenty-five million?
Yeah, and that's correct, and that's really where the polling comes in, is we could do this for this amount. Let's say it's point seven, we could do this for point eight, which would be we can maintain our current programs and expand by this. So it really would be, if we do this, then we could do that, um, and that's what would be posed to the community for consideration.
One of the things we've been doing, counties and amongst the Southwest Washington Consortium, is really offering the CTE classes to the tenth and eleventh grade, so it's low graders. If, depending on if we had other funding, we could expand exploration in early grade.
So you're talking about. You're talking about the mental health floor, it's sort of, um, relatively weird town. Relatively weird town. And a new location would add possibly village.
Well, that's what they're exploring.
Yeah, first thing I exploration today. And again, we would, we can't move forward without having the public. Polling tell us where they would be. And if we go out and we polled, we find out that. It's just not going to happen. Then we come back to you and Chris and say, this is where we like we that data that we'll get from polling. We'll have to present to you.
Sure. She can pretty much ask a question. There's one follow up. Would this then replace the general fund contribution that the districts put in or? On the end of it, or is that still?
So yeah, I think it's DVD because if it happens to have the past a half mill and just making that up.
Still need.
And really would just maintain our status quo. Um, one more thing I want to add, and Chris just mentioned about the exploration is. Um, when we think about that best leadership program around entrepreneurship as a capstone experience. We really want to drill that down much younger. And so Ryan Bruder and myself have been meeting with. You know, could we have the current curriculum aligned with some entrepreneurial units that really explore? The possibility of business approach at fifth and sixth and seventh, eighth grade. Um, leading to intro level classes and. Yeah.
So um, how long has this been in? How long does this seem to be?
Uh, since the early eighties, it's been around for about. Southwest Washington Consortium was, I think, uh, four decades. So a long time.
I guess.
So do you have the data on? The success of the students who have participated and I'm sure you could tell that that would be something. How much, uh, you know, somebody who doesn't have a certificate versus some, you know, who went through the program, how many people actually pursued? The the. Career in that field and then what they're earning potentially of what's.
Thank you. And I, yeah, so we're we're mandated by the state to do follow up surveys with our students that complete a CTE program every year. Um, it's still done by phone, uh, which is a challenge in itself. But we do have that data. If you don't mind, I will gather that data and I'll get it to Chris. Yeah. Yep, I'd be happy to do that.
December of nineteen sixty eight, there was one mill operation. Vocational school village county wide that failed. All with five mills to build a vote center. Then there was nineteen sixty eight and then when again, the county went again at seventy. And got a little closer and failed by twelve hundred folks. Um. And then went again. I don't think it's been done in thirty years. I looked it up. Uh, when it get in seventy four. Way worse.
It's kind of a hot time.
Yeah. And I think there was one more kind of. Those were the county wide.
It's unique because Whitmore Lake, uh. Willow Run in Ipsland used to run one of the largest career technical education centers in the state of Michigan, but Willow Run in Ipsland is just. That was the place to be. So the Southwest Washington Consortium responded to that at that point. Celine, Chelsea, Dexter, Manchester, were very relatively small schools. And the the mission of that consortium was we cannot do alone, but we can do best together. And so those five districts came together to form the consortium. And then Lincoln joined in two thousand nine. And so those six districts have basically been been operating together. For a long portion of time, even at the old Celine High School. Moving to New Celine High School and then expanding to Chelsea Dexter and other areas as those programs evolve. Thank you so much. I will follow up.
Is there a reason that Village hasn't been for the past fifty years? Are there benefits to funds coming? Like they're coming now versus facilitation that Village will provide?
Yeah, I think, well, when you see the enrollment, the CTE programs, I think especially coming out of COVID, that students and families. Recognize now that there are more than one way to uh, proceed with post secondary plans. And some of those are in partnership with like that fame program with our advanced manufacturers and engineering entities. Um, and so I just think there's a different mindset now that students can. Um, one, before they graduate high school at no cost to them, affirm what they want to do or more importantly, what they don't want to do when they graduate. Um, and two, there's just so many different on ramps and off ramps for our students to do whatever they want to be. And do, and uh, we desperately need them. So those training units are are really in place regardless of which direction you head.
And to. To kind of answer the question, we look at the history of what's happened to the schools of Michigan. So um, back sixties and seventies, a lot of patient programs. Eighties, this area in the eighties, nineties had huge tax, but supposedly that's ninety four. So districts were at twenty five, thirty mills to operate. Passing anything at that time was challenging. You did everything locally, but teacher search were more flexible. So you could find teachers. Teach all kinds of career tech classes. And then late nineties, early two thousands is when the whole country made the big shift. To basically turn every high school to a college prep school.
Yes.
And they eliminated shop classes, auto classes, everything. And put in what we live with now with graduation requirements that you need four years of math, four years of English, four years of social studies. Et cetera. So it took all the time out of the day to take any of those classes. And it made certification so hard. You know, and remember the highly qualified, et cetera. I mean. It made it really hard to get people certified for courses. And then meanwhile, when that shift happened, all the universities then cut all their preparation program. For CT, for CT certified teachers. So even when you try to add it back, there's nowhere to get a graduate. So now they're loosening up because the need is really there. But it's we're just a reflection of what's going on in history.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very good. Thanks for what you do.
I think it's really important as a board or as all boards in our county to understand what is available to us and what the potential future options are. All right. At this point, we are at our time for public participation. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of five minutes for a total of approximately thirty minutes unless otherwise notified. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making a public comment will be asked to raise their hands. The time may be divided equally. If each speaker will be asked to announce their name and district of residence and indicate if they represent any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting or yield their time to another speaker. Please note that the board does not respond to comment during the meeting and those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or superintendent. Must complete a public comment form which is available at the meeting entrance and on our website. If you have a single form tonight. And Sir Roberts.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Eric John Roberts. I'm a former school board member. I served six years. On the Kennewah Hills Public Schools Board of Education outside of Grand Rapids. Before moving to the Ann Arbor area to attend law school, then my graduate studies. I'm here tonight because I'm a candidate for Washington ISD School Board. Uh, this year, this is an election that all nine school districts boards of education's weigh in on. Uh, during the month of May and then in the first Monday and in June. Uh, representative from each of the nine boards, we get together at the ISD and cast the. The ballots based on what you've talked about and decided in your main meeting. Um, why am I running for the Board of Education? Um, I have a passion for students. Uh, for the past four years throughout my undergrad, um, and while I worked between undergrad and graduate. And now in graduate school, I've been a substitute teacher. And I did that because uh, in my law program, I'm going into disability and education law as well as public defense. And I knew that I wanted to have a better understanding of. One, what it is that teachers do on the daily while I was a school board members when I started substitute teaching. And two, what do accommodations look like? How do they operate in a classroom? Uh, and and what goes into those IP meetings? And so I've got some great experience um, substitute teaching. Here in Washington County um, and at the ISD. Um, and I and I wanted to do that to to better understand more of the operations of a school district. And and best advocate for students um, as a board member and as an an advocate for public education. During my time on the Kennewah Hill School Board, I put in more than two thousand hours of. Uh, training in how to become the best advocate for students I could. I've earned the MSB President's Award of Recognition. Um, I believe in record time perhaps. Um. Especially around when the 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 COVID era began, I spent a lot of time uh, on buses. You know, feeding the kids in my community. Uh, we took our elementary bus routes and turned that into uh, really a food route because a lot of parents were losing. Uh, their source of income. And our primary response was making sure that we connected with students every day. So one of the things that I talked about, um, bringing to the ISD table. And and continuing to ask these questions. And it's one of the reasons I chose to live here in Washington County is because this county will be the first county in the state. To connect every home to to the fibers that allow high speed internet access to per. Um. If we can reach every student, we know that this is a vital need for all of our young people. And and this would be a monumental. Um, so there's a lot of work that's already gone into that. And I'd like to keep talking about that, especially at the ISD table. You know, monitoring um, implementation of the county's plans uh, to expand broadband access. Um. I presented at two MSB conferences myself. Um, so I'm well versed and and really the the benefits of attending any kind of. Training is getting to meet school board members. So talk with you all. About what's going on in your districts. Um, I've seen Dr. Rose's presentation now, I think, four or five times. We're kind of on the same rotation, I guess. Uh, but I'm getting to all nine districts. To um, see what it is that you're working on here that you're passionate about, to share information about myself. I provided the board chair of eight copies of. Uh, some more information about me and on the front here is a calendar link that's got my availability from now till. Uh, mid-May when this election takes place. I mean, if any of you would like to sit down and talk to me individually or perhaps at. Two on one or email me any questions, I'm happy to get back to you to share my thoughts about. Um, what the ISD uh, can do to improve on and collaborate more with local districts. And I really thought it necessary to get out and meet everybody. Um, so this is number seven for me. I've got two left. Um, I'll be at the CTE summit that's happening tomorrow to also, you know, see how the community feels about this. And I hope to see. Some of you there as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much for being here. Do you have materials for? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Been on for administrative and board updates. We'll start with the superintendent.
Uh, Dreadbot Dreadbot's finished third over the weekend and are now ranked fourth in the state. So they're a good. Uh, trajectory to make it states and then maybe worlds. That'd be great. Spring break is next week. Um. We have a bottom forum Wednesday at nine AM. Wellness Center had some people show up in the last one. Chip it away. Sports are in full swing. I don't want to say it.
Um, I just have two uh, quick updates. Um, the Washington Association of School Boards met last week and they did nominate a new slate of officers for. The next year, I am going to be the Legislative Relations Network Chair next year. So um, please feel free to join me in practice. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It means I am ultimately responsible for bringing together the concerns of the districts to make sure they're on the agenda in front of our legislators. I I actually think it is in my opinion, one of the most valuable parts of the WASB that's being put together. And uh, as a group of districts, make sure people know what we are worried about and paying attention to. Um, and then the second thing is just I want to highlight what Sir Roberts mentioned, which is that there are WASD elections this year. And for those who are new to this, I will just remind people um. And let everyone know that the Washington. Or that the, yeah, the Washington ISD Board is elected by its member districts. So our board will come together. Uh, to say who we are voting for and we will choose a delegate who wants us to go in person to vote. And that is how the ISD keeps their coordination. So that is coming in the end of this year. That's it for me. Claire.
Like Mrs. Sings, spring sports is right. And I think that. And we'll be gone by five or six minutes. Um, but lucky for me, my heart is in at five thirty, so I will be here. Um, but that also means that most of all the winter sports are done, um, states for swim. Um, has finally matched up and then opened this weekend. There are around four swimmers, I'm not sure, but there were a lot that made state competition and they all did. Good for them. Happy ending. Um, but again, spring course is starting up. Um, for some of them, it's been sweet too for couple, three. Some of them aren't even really getting into it already. Warhol has had a lot of games, a lot of scrimmages already. Um, cross as well, sub scrimmages, soccer, everything's kind of getting in the both. Um, tennis, we have a match Wednesday against Miley. Um, I would say. Pull up and watch, but don't watch me because I really hate to watch. Um, but hopefully it'll be our first one of the season. So. Um, last Monday was the career fair. I thought it was really helpful. There was a mix of opinions that would really depend on. What people were looking forward to and if they had a group that they were looking forward to see. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the, they got a lot, but a handful of people had to cancel last minute. So. A couple of students were left, big foot and careers they weren't exactly interested in. So. Again, for some. There is, and I think to touch on what we've already heard on speed and getting started with mistakes a lot earlier, I think really is. Even though I have a sense of direction since again, I'm getting so close to college and like my other school students. It's very stressful to kind of reach out. It's almost like you want to force yourself into liking something that's kind of feel pressured to. But when you're in younger grades, you don't have any of that pressure. And um, the ability to explore is just. A lot easier for you and you don't feel that stressed about, oh, maybe I'll talk to her later one day and then. Chef the next day versus now. Maybe I just need to say something. Um, so I think this whole idea of trying to expand the options, no matter what way we do it, but having those options. And exploration and starting a bit younger. So kids really aren't as stressed, pressured into it. Um, when they're older is really good. And then spring break, testing, post spring break is not going to be very relaxing, but hopefully that week will get us prepared for all the testing.
Do you like us to order t-shirts and say I survived test pass twenty twenty five?
Well, that we'll see.
That's great. Thank you for that update and thank you for the commentary on. Okay, I didn't interrupt you, right? You're wrong. Um. We are moving on to our consent items.
I'll move that.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to action items for this evening. First, we're looking at policies and we have a second reading. These actually were on our agenda two meetings ago. Um. This evening's topic contains several policies, thirty two, thirteen, electronic transaction funds and automating. Clearing house arrangements, thirty three, three opposition real property, thirty three, oh nine bus inspections, sixty six, oh four required designated reserve funds. And these policies will approve for first reading on February twenty fourth or November fourth for second reading and final. I'll look at the Board of Education approved attached policies, three, three, one, three, 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 oh two, three, three, oh nine, and six, oh four for second and final.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? If this is an action item, let's go along publicly. You're all ready? To Arnold? Really?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm keeping aware. Aye.
Okay, um, we also have two policies that are up to be rescinded. I'm with the Board of Education, education, listen, policy six, six, eight, zero, and five, one, oh, six, for a, for a, fourteen, one, six, eight, and fourteen, one, nine, nine. Second motion. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Um can we do a roll call vote, please? Mr. Arnold?
Aye.
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 Angus, Ryder? Aye. Vera? Aye. Oliver?
Aye.
Moving on to the auditor extension. This evening's packet includes a proposal from Freeman for extending the district's contract. This was considered and recommended by the Finance Committee at the February tenth meeting. The packet also includes a memo from CFO Christie regarding the proposed extension of the district's quality contracts. I'll move the board. I'll move the written rap, send all this to any of those auditors. Twenty-four, twenty-five. This is. It's twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm sorry. Twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five. Thank you. The students. Motion and a second, discussion. We are leaving.
We did our remitting services several years ago, and in that process, we came back with random data, which was all of the significant. In that contract, we agreed that we would consider extensions at the end of the contract, so. And if we read that, it'll be significant.
I would add that the um we had some discussion about the length of of work with the same auditor. And um Christie rightly pointed out that every year there's a different. There's different project control committee, there's different, whole set of series of different auditors who are on this project they rotate. So it's not like we have the same auditor here. So that that helps me. Get work.
Will there be opportunity to reset again? And extend it again, or is it?
So. We don't have any.
All out.
So we don't have any board approval to continue past this two-year.
Okay.
Um so I would expect that we would issue.
Got to reset.
This keeps our costs pretty close to what it's been. When we read the the significant. Just the point rate, we're like in like a pre-pandemic rate.
It's significantly lower.
The only thing we have.
Yep.
Trust for happy.
Yeah, I mean, this was my first year here, obviously going.
Presentation terms. And the most important is not just the audit, it's the support throughout the year as we're navigating situations like the uh most recent, we had to do a refund. The state gave some money to refund the three percent healthcare contributions of some of them. And helping navigate, okay, how do we do this? How do we put it so it's clean so that during the audit, we're not redoing? So and all of that's included.
And they're very responsive. There's also, um there's always a pre-audit meeting, so when the audit is kicked off, um it will come and meet with the Finance Committee. So if any board members have a concern or a community member that they can reach out to us. And we could um discuss that during the pre-audit. He is very, very responsive with. He did that as well. You will follow up, please. Burgling? Aye.
Aye.
Angus? Aye. Ryder? Aye. Vera? Aye. Oliver? Moving on to our discussion items, um we tonight are discussing the remaining twenty-seventeen bond projects. And Dexter Community School successfully committed all major objectives outlined in the twenty-seventeen bond application. Our packet includes a memo outlining some of the projects with remaining funds. And recommend, and a recommendation of Board of Education to use some remaining bond funds from these projects to support allowable bond-funded projects for any currently owned school district. Property. And this item is presented before the session is.
So there's a memo. We worked with our attorneys on the way process for this. We have, and this is actually a really timely way to do this because we have a, your, this is your first bond. Then we have on the, on the ballot, and this is what happened at the end. So in the original plans, we had budgeted outside Creekside to change that driveway that we just put up barricades at. Um we were originally going to put a giant driveway with a few houses, but there was all trash. And we had budgeted a plan that's going to do this homeless loop around and we're going to change the flow. Then city, SiO Township and the Road Commission, we all got together and worked on the roundabout. Which meant that we no longer had to do the flow. And actually, that flow we planned at the time doesn't work the roundabout right there. It actually will mess up the flow. So we no longer need those funds that we set aside in that project. And basically, we budgeted or placed drinking fountains in some of the projects. We were still okay. Cornerstone, uh we budgeted for a rain shelter for the bus hub. We ended up doing so we're walking. Uh for buses, we received three hundred thousand, three hundred, four thousand dollars in Volkswagen suddenly created, but they bought buses, so we don't leave that creator out of five months. Um site acquisition, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for purchasing property. It was really thinking through when we did a new construction. We needed an easement or if we needed a little strip of land somewhere, et cetera. Based on the projects we had left, we don't have a reason to buy property. And then Oakland, we had about eight hundred thousand budgeted in Oakland originally for upgrades when we sold. So. What what action we'd do on this is allowing the bond funds that were unspent in these projects, and they're not all unspent, there are portions left. Um to be used on any property we own, including any new property in case we had. Um so if we had a loop, go on a new property, we could actually.
Actually, a care carryover?
Um we have to spend, we have to have appropriate all, but it gives us the ability that if we had to do an emergency.
Yeah.
We could, and if we had something that made sense when we're at the final opponent, then we could. But we'd always go through the facilities we've been able to that process. It just is a formality to be able to be really transparent. Here's the things we chose not to do and why. And now it opens up to in two thousand sixteen with this proposal put together on boards like that. Now we're in two thousand twenty-five and we got money, we chose not to do these projects, but we have a different campus. So it just allows that place.
Do you have a sense of the dollar?
Yeah, yeah. Um we're, we got a spreadsheet. It's like a million something.
You're at eight hundred.
Yeah, but not all of it. We use some of it, other things. So we're still, we had some interest in. We had some things like Craig's wrapping up a couple of the big projects that were the uh giant, like the rooftop units and things like that. So we have somebody there. Um I think once it's like a billion, billion and a half, it's in that range.
We're wrapping up all of our projects from previous. Yeah, just a general.
Building, it's like a little bit here, a little bit there, there, but it adds up.
And just to reiterate what you said, anything that is paid for out of bond funds always comes back to the board table. Showing for the big ones that are then shown to be paid up.
If it's over the threshold. But there's some things we have.
Yeah.
And when we set up the bond project, we know we have state threshold. Then we have the ring, um and then we have uh. There's like the smaller items, just like.
Yeah, I I guess I just, the community members who are asking, the larger projects that are done out of bond funds will continue to come in front of us, even if it's from these budgets that we are. Going to technically approve to not be doing what we already set. Anyone else? Um we are now at our time for our second public participation section. Is there anyone who would like to address? Right, moving on to board comments.
Good job. Well, I did attend the career fair last week, not as a presenter, just flying along. Which was a good perspective because I watched for a long. And listened to a lot of good interviews. And some were, some were pretty engaging, some of the speakers had interesting jobs and were people. So I thought it was a good, really good first. First shot at it. I'm sure we'll learn things in that as we go, but I was surprised, shocked at the number of meeting members. That was over. There's some. Yeah, um willing to sit at a table and present to multiple groups of fans. It was really impressive that that many people. The same number of people, the same people.
I thought it was great. I presented, so I was one of the career presenters. And we had three sessions of students. And uh some students were more interested and more engaging than others. And I think it's just good for them to learn and hear from people in different professions. Um I'm happy to report that we have a student that already reached out and wants to come and shadow, job shadow uh over spring break. So my uh the attorney in my unit is, I said, find a good doc, get like, find something very exciting for her to come and watch. And um but it's just, you know, they can come and watch and see what it's like to to be in court and and that is something. So I really enjoyed it and I I thought it was great. Some students like thought they wanted to do that, maybe some. Were signed up for something that they didn't want, but I thought it was great and I hope that they continue to do it.
Definitely did hear from a student after it was done, saying. Which is good, which.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd almost like to see they pick two that they like and maybe they just get thrown in one day, you know, just a random.
They almost did. We had.
Yeah.
Cancel over ice. And they were, we had, we had more speakers. They were canceling really good, so a week or two before we had a group of, we shuffled. And then overnight, we had all that. It's gonna be more than.
No, I thought it was great. And my other board comment is, and maybe very intense to this. Uh the drinking fountain said, I could some of that extra money, think so.
Great guys, giant green. So we just got awarded, yes, I have a filthy first RFP ready to go for about four hundred thousand dollars. We just got our grant award letter in Michigan yesterday. So I, we were waiting until we had money in hand so that our people go out and replace all of them.
So what should I tell the students? It would be, it will be there in the fall or like?
We're gonna, we have to put on an RFP. We have to put out the RFP.
Got it, okay.
People have, like, you'd say yes by fall, but it'll depend on. The kids come in within what we can afford. And and the fact that every school in the state of Michigan has the board grants to do it, so it could be, that's why I was ready to go, since we got the board to get it on the street, so we could be ready to go.
That's good news.
So I think I love this.
We've replaced a bunch of them over the years. The kids are tough on us. They really are. It's like the shot.
Anybody else with a comment or? All right, um our packet includes information items. We have uh minutes from the Finance Committee. We have nice job notes from January and we have SBA minutes. Um and we do have a closed session tonight, so can I get a motion to move into closed session? I'll move the Board of Education into closed session to discuss the bring him to court with the stay on relation after the time of break. The motion and a second, people will call us if they want.
Aye.
Angus? Ryder? Aye. Vera? Aye. You're all agree? Aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, good luck.
We're all coming to lunch.
Think he's coming out. Yeah, I forgot my cheaters. I can't see them. Can I just quit? I don't have my cheaters on right now, so.
There are red muscles.
Yeah.